You want to do exclamation mark?
Ava, Ava.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Capron.
Here.
I make a motion we go into closed session. City Council discuss strategy and matters relating to employment conditions of employees of the city covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Thank you. Mm-hmm. Lisa, is this on? Lisa, is this on? Why wasn't it? That's why they're here.
I move we return to open session.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
I move we adjourn to closed session. Second.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Capron.
Here.
Here. We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations or interviews today, so we'll go right to the consent agenda, which today is items two through seventeen C. Consider all items to pass unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it, state your name and address so it can be recorded. Want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Two is a reading of the city council minutes of August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Three is a resolution establishing the Gildan Coast of O Sister City Committee. Four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute releases of promissory notes and mortgages under the Home Investment Partnership Program. Five are motions appointing Samuel Avery to the Parking and Skywalk System Board to complete the balance of a three-year term expire in December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Six is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual by approving an updated job description for firefighter. Please explain that for me. Is Janelle here? I should have asked you ahead of time, but you always tell me there's no real change and there's no difference in pay and all that. Is that...
Janelle Bertrand, Human Resources Director. We're getting ready to advertise for firefighter, and when reviewing the documentation, we noticed that the minimum qualifications on the job description were different from the civil service rules, so we wanted to ensure that they were consistent. One required a four-year degree and one indicated a high school degree.
Seven's a resolution authorizing final payment to downrange construction for the inbound utility field service facility project. Does that mean this building is safe again? Or at least the part that they fixed? Mr. Mock, it's good to have you back in the chamber. How you been?
Doing just fine, Mayor. Thank you. Rick Mock, Special Assistant to City Manager. They were very successful in getting good strength, at least on the east side. On the north side, they got decent strength. The building was stabilized for now. We are continuing with the design. Should have plans to bring forward to council or at least the conceptual plans and see if you approve that in very near future.
Okay. Thank you. Eight's a resolution awarding a purchase order to maintainer custom bodies for a sign truck, work platform, and crane. Nine are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a methamphetamine drug hotspot grant for the Office of Drug Control Policy to assist the police department with investigations. B is a resolution approving a grant agreement with FAA for the runway at seventeen dash thirty-five reconstruction and shift project at Gateway Airport. C is a resolution approving a grant with the FAA for a reimbursable agreement for the runway seventeen thirty-five reconstruction and shift project at the Gateway Airport. D is a resolution authorizing the airport director to sign a reimbursable agreement with the FAA at the runway seventeen to make an amendment because the amount should be a hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and eleven cents. I'll move that amendment.
Second.
Is that all you...
Yeah.
Okay.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Ten are actions relating to street closures. A is a resolution temporarily closing portions of Main and West Fifth Streets September fifteenth for the Convoy of Hope Event. B is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the downtown area October twelfth for the Bishop Healan Homecoming Parade.
Mayor, can I ask a question of Angel on this one? I think I spoke to Angel last year, but after the Healan Homecoming event last year, lady contacted me and expressed concern because when they came down Pearl to Seventh Street and went west to Wesley Way, there was eastbound traffic on the other side of the yellow line while the parade was marching down going that way. So are we shutting off Wesley Way so no traffic can get down West Seventh until the parade is...
Yes, Wesley Way will be closed.
Completely closed?
Yes.
Okay. Because last year, they were concerned it got... Cars got awful close to marching bands.
Okay, yes. I do recall that, and it will be closed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
C is a resolution temporarily closing a portion of Orleans Avenue, October thirteenth and fourteenth, for the Junk in the Park Event. D is a resolution temporarily closing portions of Floyd Boulevard and Jefferson Street, September twentieth, for the North High School Homecoming Parade. E is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Morningside area, September twenty-ninth, for the Starfest Marching Band Competition and Fundraiser. Eleven are civil penalties and suspension. A is a resolution assessing a five-hundred-dollar civil penalty against White Oaks Gas Station Number Fifty-Six, ten thirty-one Morningside Avenue, for violation of the Iowa beer, wine, and liquor licenses. B is a resolution assessing a five-hundred-dollar civil penalty against Central Mart, one thousand Morningside Avenue, for violation of the Iowa beer, wine, and liquor laws. Twelve are actions relating to construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Public Library Museum Branch Renovation Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the two thousand and eighteen Annual Intake Repair Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the Gordon Drive Signal Replacement Project. D is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the two thousand and eighteen Manhole Rehabilitation Project. Thirteen are actions relating to bond. A is a resolution setting a hearing for the issuance of not to exceed seventeen million in geo-urban renewal bonds. B is a resolution setting a hearing on the First Amendment to the Development Agreement with the Warrior Hotel.
Mayor, I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest.
Fourteen are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a motion authorizing acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen Cooperative Agreement from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Human Rights Commission. Karen, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Sent you an email. Do you... It's kind of unclear. Do you have to... I mean, what happens if all of yours come back, no finding? Do you still get...
Karen Mackey, Human Rights Commission, we get paid regardless of the finding?
What's that?
We are paid regardless of the finding.
You get paid regardless of the... Okay.
Absolutely.
It's a different fee structure, right? Or something? I tried reading through that whole thing.
Yeah, it's not...
That was long, but I was trying to figure it out, too.
So whether we have a cause finding or no cause finding, that is not at all dependent on how we get paid or what we get paid. If we do a proper... If we do an investigation and we come up with a no cause finding, we are paid the same as if we did an investigation and have a cause finding. Now, there is additional money that we can get when it's a case, for example, that the legal department ends up then having to litigate. They will pay us a little bit more. I think it's five hundred dollars. Doesn't begin to, you know, really cover the cost, but the amount we get is the same. They don't want to incentivize issuing cause findings, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
B is a resolution approving a development agreement with Forty-Eight South for residential development at forty-eight hundred Singing Hills Drive.
I had a question about that. And actually, Jeff, it's not maybe specifically you, Jeff, or Marty, anyone can comment on this. It was just kind of more of a philosophy approach. I just had a question about it because I still feel fairly new and naive sometimes. As far as the amount of money that goes to it for them, I'm happy that we have developers that want to expand and grow our city, but the question that I have is, is it just the onus on the developer to decide, you know, we're really getting a lot of new housing initiatives, we should not put those dollars there? Because, I mean, we're giving about six hundred K of the grants and things like that to this project. Do we ever make the decision when it's like, you know, let's start going a different direction and look at more jobs or bringing, you know, quality of life amenities, trying to bring more people, make sure that we're filling these? I know we have waiting lists on different properties as well, so I'm not saying, oh, I don't think it's going to sell. Is there a point where, as a city, as a city council, as staff, we think about that?
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. This funding source is for strictly residential infill and new residential growth development through our capital improvement program project list. And so this is separate from what you typically see with a commercial or industrial economic development grant because this money is specifically tied to new residential growth. That is correct. And as you've noticed in the report, we're spreading out this project over a three-year period because of the size and quantity of the number of units being built with this new construction project.
Yeah.
In this case, we have over a hundred new residential development units going in on approximately five and a half acres. That's currently within Woodbury County jurisdiction. Upon completion and approval of development agreement, the developer, as part of the development agreement, is required to annex in that five and a half acres plus or minus into the city of Sioux City. I would say as part of a review of these funds would be during the CIP process. So yet this fall, early winter, as we come forward with our CIP projects, that would be the time to review it. The other tool that we have, keep in mind, for residential development is the tax abatement program. In this case, the current tax abatement program expires the end of December, two thousand and twenty. And so that's another tool that we use for incentivizing residential growth, and that's another tool that we can analyze and review when that comes up for expiration in two thousand and twenty.
I have a question, though, and I'm not trying to be critical of developers, but the Overlook Project and the Bertrand Project need to clean up their sites. Unacceptable. If you come to the city for money, then your neighbors should expect that your site will be mowed, and it's not happening. I'm sorry, but when I drive by, if I had seven-foot sunflowers on my property, you would not let me get by till they... At two feet, you would have sent me a notice. And the Bertrand in particular, right on Floyd Boulevard, needs some housekeeping done. And if we're going to help developers, then they need to help us with the neighborhood. And Dan, I'm sorry, but yours needs some cleaning up. I drove by there over the weekend, and it just... We need to keep the weeds mowed at a proper level like we would in any other neighborhood.
Understood.
Jeff answered that pretty well, Alex. I was just going to add, you know, with some of the downtown... Maybe thinking about some of the mixed-use projects downtown, we have residential mixed with commercial, and we're using a mix of incentives there that... The same incentives that Jeff talked about on the Revite side work for the residential parts of those buildings, whereas you might have TIF...
More specifically for...
TIF or historic credits or something working on the rest of the building, so...
Yeah.
And I think that's good for, as you were saying, for attracting more people to live in the downtown, but you have to be careful with TIF... Sorry. You have to be careful with TIF with residential because you really can't use that, so... But if you get into a mixed-use deal, it could kind of do that. Otherwise, I think the DIG funds are using a lot of utility to refund.
Correct, yeah. I know there's a lot associated with this project.
Can I ask a question, too, Marty or Jeff, while you're there? I noticed in the developer's agreement, it says, "The developer may request an extension in the event of unanticipated circumstances arise." I was just curious, if that happens, who makes that decision? Is that something you make? Does that come to council if, for some reason, the hundred units aren't built by two thousand and twenty-two?
The development agreement is approved by the city council. Therefore, the developer would have to request an extension through staff to the city council.
Okay.
And we would bring that forward for your review and approval.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. And we've yet... In the number of development agreements that we've done for these funds, we've yet to see any of those requests.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
C is a resolution approving a contract with Kramer and Associates for the two thousand and eighteen...
I was just curious. I saw on this one that there was only the one bid that came back. I didn't know if we had any idea why, and then obviously it was over... Quite a bit over the engineer's estimate, but then on the next one, it was under, and it was the same company. I mean, I get that they kind of offset, but just curious why this one would only get one bid versus the others? Do we know? Do we... Are we comfortable with the one bid because we made it up on the other end? What are your thoughts?
Gordon Farrar, City Engineer. Yeah, we're pretty comfortable with this contractor at this point. We don't have... We didn't see any reasons not to be.
Any idea why only one would bid when...
Because you got Gaberson Smith with about fourteen... Or seven bridges on the interstate. You got Dixon with a bunch of bridges out on Highway twenty, and you've got... Just escaped me. The other one... Hawkins is loaded with work in council bluffs that's come up here before. They got so much work in council bluffs. Omaha on that twenty-nine eighty corridor, they can't keep up right now. They were pouring approaches the other night at like nine o'clock when I went through, so they're way behind, obviously.
Yeah, that's a good possibility there. Plus, this one also has some drainage repairs in there also.
But Kramer's really a good bridge. I mean, they're really good.
Gordon...
Not necessarily worried about the company itself. I mean, I trust you, Jeff.
But that's why everybody's so loaded with bridge work right now.
Because it's like this one's multiple bridges or bridge projects.
Right.
And only one person bid. And then the next one, we have just one bridge.
That's why, because the mobilization kills you.
I have a question, a quick one for you. In looking at the bid, one of the line items was the painting of the structural steel, and the engineer estimated twenty thousand dollars, but the bid was a hundred and ten thousand. What would cause that? What would be the cause for the discrepancy?
Brittany Anderson, Senior Civil Engineer. We didn't have it tested ahead of time to verify whether or not it was hazardous material. We did during the process verify that it doesn't contain hazardous material, but that's one, just the risk of having that there probably raise their cost.
You said it does or does not?
It does not.
Does not? Okay. Thank you.
C is a resolution approving a contract to Kramer and Associates for the two thousand and eighteen Bridge Repairs Project. Oh, I'm sorry. D is a resolution approving a contract to Kramer and Associates for the Forty-Six Street Bridge overlay over Floyd River Project. Fifteen's are actions relating to property. A is a resolution approving the First Amendment to Grant of a Temporary Easement with the Aberdeen Apartments. B is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Agreement of the Temporary Easement, thirteen fourteen West Third.
Mayor, yeah, I need to abstain on items fifteen A and B. Conflict of interest.
Sixteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Seventeen, receipt a minute. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Call the roll, please.
Voting panels are not working under all votes. Council, yeah. Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. Recommendations of planning and zoning. A is eighteen, is a hearing and ordinance vacating the alley at six-ten and six-twenty Pearl Street. The petitioner is the city of Sioux City, recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
We have a new commissioner here to speak today.
New chair.
Hello, Michelle Bossenellis, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Yep, that first one, the vacation of Alley Jason sixty-twenty Pearl Street, sixteen-ten Pearl Street, was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, a four-to-two vote.
Move that. Okay, sorry. I have it wrong.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Move second and third. Or I'll move, waive statutory rule.
Second.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin. Aye.
Nineteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating the alley at five-twenty Nebraska Street. The petitioner is Motor Mart. P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Okay.
Yep, also, property owners, recommended with a four-to-two vote.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Anybody opposed waiving the rule?
No.
I'll move it.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye. Second and third.
Second.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Twenty's a hearing and ordinance vacating the alley at eight-fourteen Thirty-Third Street and thirty-two fifty-eight and thirty-two sixty Jones Street. The petitioner is Lowell Satterright, Jr. The P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
This one, we did. There was some discussion with this one. There was actually a similar request that came back in two thousand and fourteen, and back then, the P&amp;Z and council denied the request. But this would just be the north portion of the alley. The petition would like to build a house there. We did have one person that came, besides the petitioner, speak for the project, but we had two who were opposed, and there was one comment in our agenda that was also one that was opposed. You know, the discussion really went around if this alley was really used for the transportation system. A lot of the opposition was regarding getting their equipment in and out, like landscaping equipment, mowers, and whatnot. It was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission to go ahead and approve the vacation at five to one vote.
You know, Michelle, this one in particular, and I try my best to go with the plan and zoning recommendations, but the write-up was in such a way that, after I read it, I was surprised that it was approval, five to one, as opposed to denial because of all the reasons that were listed.
Right.
We don't want to have a...
Yeah, I think when it came down to... We were really trying to decide if it was really being used as part of the transportation system, and from what the staff was telling us and what the neighbors were telling us, there was really... The ends of the alley, on the north and south end, you can get a little, you know, somewhat through it, but to go actually travel down the entire alley is... It's not passable. And so keeping it open would be more for, I think, the convenience of those landowners, like I said, to maybe get landscaping mower equipment in and out, but not necessarily to pass vehicles through.
But the staff recommendation was to not approve, correct?
Right, that was correct. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And that's where I was confused because it says approval of an item, and then right under the recommendation, it's deny the requested vacation, and then it says staff recommends denial? Am I reading that wrong, or was there nothing?
Nope, I think that was it. Jeff, if you want to jump in on this one?
Action, I think.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. What you're reading is correct for the title. The staff is just simply a staff recommendation, and what's in front of you is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, which was approval. And so that is the item that you're voting on, is the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval.
Got you. Staff recommends denying the vacation.
Correct.
The P&amp;Z is saying we would like to approve.
That is correct. And I have the map pulled up here if you'd like to look at it.
Yes, please.
Before you speak to the petitioner. Lisa, if you want to pull up the map when you have a minute. So we have the area map here. The question... The vacation requested by the petitioner is this property here highlighted. The petitioner owns this property here, would like to build a home, and that home would encroach into the alley that's being requested to be vacated. The lot today exists without the alley, is buildable, but the petitioner's plans to build a house because of the size of the house would encroach into that alley. As you can see here, it's a fairly lengthy alley, approximately two blocks long. This portion here is not passable as it exists today because of the overgrowth. If you look at some photos, here's on the north end, the petitioner's property looking south. He has since gone into the alley and cleaned it from the vegetation, so that's why you see this cleaned out today. This is the south end where you can see that a few properties on the south end do use the alley to access their garages, and actually, it's their only access to their garages on the south end. Staff did hear from a number of the neighbors, as usual, with comments sent to our office in opposition. It's our understanding that the individual that was here in support of the alley resides at this location. In further speaking with her after the meeting, I believe she was confused. I don't see her in the audience here today, but I believe she was confused because her comment to staff at the end of the meeting was that she would like it left open so she could build a garage. I believe there was some confusion on the vacation process that she was not clear on. So based on our discussions with her, she was opposed to it because for her to build a garage, she would have to have that alley left open. I know there's also another residence in the audience that would like to speak in opposition.
That would be open at the north end of the alley you're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll open it up for discussion. If you want to speak, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'll move to the podium, please.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm Valerie Flanagan at thirty-two sixty Jones, and my residence is the first photo that was shown, which is directly behind on the corner. So mine is the most directly affected by this. The original meeting, I was unable to attend, I had an emergency with my daughter out of town. Um, we've approached this issue in the past, so I've been present here with all of my neighbors in opposition. We are still all in opposition. So, uh, just coming right from work, I didn't want to miss anything, so I just wrote down my concerns. Let's see. Um, there are a few that are personal and some that are just more widespread that I can pretty much speak for myself and others. Um, I've had, my daughter has had issues of harassment. Um, my neighbor has had issues of harassment and as have I. So each of these, um, these are each regarding separate incidents, but with residents within the vicinity right around. So when I purchased, um, my residence, it was due to the, uh, privacy that it provides. So that would be immediately impacted and completely changed. Um, at least I had the window of that space. So that would go away. Uh, my fence is where we sit and it's an open fence just with lilac bushes kind of as a privacy. Um, so right there on the right side. So a few concerns I have with that, um, let's see, the, I don't know, I guess that space to keep it at bay, that's basically my backyard. So someone would be right there. Um, in the past, when I referenced the harassment, I don't know, I can't honestly say, but it was someone who had, um, somehow acquired my contacts and was getting in touch with me. And they were telling me they were watching me from someone who lived in one of those houses right behind and, you know, just can see me and can see when I'm home and things like that. So this would be even worse because that whole space would be gone. I realize he's going to build there anyway. Uh, my question is, uh, also the conflict of insufficient land because originally I heard that it was insufficient for building, but you had just said it was sufficient for building either way, just regarding how big he wanted the house. Um, so I wondered if that was foreseen or surveyed prior to the purchase or not. I mean, if there was this big conflict, why buy it without, uh, confirmation that it was going to pass? I'm curious about that. Um, another big thing would be the runoff because of my area with the rain. It's, it's, I don't know, it's kind of interesting in the area with rain and, um, drainage and all of that. So that's huge for me, looking at this picture, and I've been back there, imagining this retaining wall gone would be, uh, very much we're on a hill. So it would slope right into my backyard. I, um, I don't use chemicals in my backyard, I don't, um, have any issue as of now. And so I just wonder the accountability of that, if that were to become, uh, something of concern. And also I would have no way of knowing or maybe too late if it was a concern and then what would happen. I don't know. So, um, I would be, I think they mentioned four or five people in opposition, I would be, uh, like fulfilling that. So everyone is basically in opposition for kind of a multitude of reasons. And that sums up a whole lot, my biggest issues being just privacy, um, and then just environmental in this space. So I, I wonder what would be, I, uh, just what would be that. Um, well, they mentioned those who did show up last time and who spoke and...
Few years ago.
No, 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 they showed up this time too.
Yeah, we had, we had two show up at the meeting in opposition and then there was a written comment in the, in the reports.
Yes. I also submitted mine written because I couldn't be in attendance. Um, but we did visit this in the past where it was denied because everyone was, um, not in favor for different reasons. Um, I know my neighbors, uh, beside me, um, you'd mentioned the one who I wasn't sure if by the end she was in favor or not, the other residents, uh, who wanted the garage situation. But one can, when, um, opposition I've heard about that is she has plenty of kids and grandkids and family constantly in her pool and her yard. And that actual house has been taking photos of her children. I think that's in the court system right now. So I think she would be more than happy to have that cleared and have access to that residence, which is a problem.
I'm going to need you to wind up your comments because we've got a three minute limit.
And that wraps it up for me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else be heard? No one?
Jeff, I had a couple of questions then. So were you saying it was the thirty two fifty three Jennings that was wanting to put the house or the garage?
Chris Manson Planner, correct. That is the address, the lady that did show up at Planning and Zoning, um, under, uh, those in favor. But then she did submit the comment that we did include in the RCA to counsel stating her opposition.
He's right here.
Yep.
And so I guess, Michelle, with these reasons or with these people speaking in opposite, um, opposition, um, why do you think P and Z, I mean, I've read through some of the discussion about how did they, when it was opposed last time?
Right.
Three or four people this time opposing it, why are...
Right, and I, I guess if you look at the vote, I was the one person that said no, so. Um, and in that, just, I guess I can give you my reason and everyone else you can, you can read the notes or maybe these guys can help summarize it. But, um, you know, I had the same concern that there were so many citizens who were, were saying no, that it, that it came forward in twenty fourteen and the answer was no. Um, you know, probably if there wasn't so many concerned citizens, that's really kind of why, you know, why I voted no. Um, again, the discussion really ended up being, uh, with the other members that we were only looking at the north portion of that alley, so it would still be accessible from, from the south end. Um, the fact that it's really not being used as a transportation system right now, you can, you know, you heard that it's really overgrown, so it's either being used for privacy or, like I said, people are, are, had plans maybe to use it to get mowers in or or other equipment. Um, so it, it definitely wasn't, uh, a decision that was made lightly. We talked about it for a long time and and went around and around with it, so.
But this, this person has no guarantee we're going to sell him the whole alley.
Correct, and that's been made, uh, the policy has been in the past that we would offer up the half of the alley. In this case, it'd be eight foot each adjacent property owner. Uh, and the petitioner is aware of that.
Well, here's, here I got a lot of problems with it, but my first problem is, if we don't know if he's going to buy all the alley, we don't need a half an alley. You vacate it, but what if the other people don't want to buy?
I think his preference would be up to buy all of it. He's in the audience if you'd like to ask the petitioner.
To buy the whole alley?
I think that would be his preference.
That's two blocks long.
Eight fourteen, thirty third Street.
From thirty second to thirty third. Did you go look at that alley?
He's talking what he's vacating.
The highlighted area is the sixteen by a hundred that I would be interested in buying. I would also be interested in buying eight by a hundred. I would just like to build a larger house. Um, and I would like to be able to keep that alley. The alley had four foot weeds in it. And if I build a brand new house beside it, I would want either the city to maintain it and like keep it clean or I would like to clean it myself. I guess I...
What area are you talking about?
The alleyway. Yeah, I, I bought that alley or that lot a year ago and hauled, I mean, it was completely overgrown with trees and me and my son worked for weeks and cleared it. Um, and now the alley was the last thing. So I'd like to build a house on there and my, and right up on that retaining wall is where I'd like to build a house. So eight foot would help me, sixteen foot would help me, and I would really just like to keep it cleaned up, you know?
Sir, if we need you to state your name and address for the record.
Eight fourteen thirty third Street Lowell Satterwhite Junior.
Because basically the opposition, the people that wanted to keep it open, because it's like, I, I don't want to deny someone if they want to build a garage or something like that, but it's like, well, you haven't done it in ten years. This is the catalyst, like?
I also spoke with a neighbor that was opposed to it and I said I would be more than happy to give him, he gets in his garage every once in a while on the second story of his garage. I said, I'm not going to deny access from you walking into a yard to get into your garage, you know, if he didn't want to buy his portion of the alley. Um, I just want a beautification, I would just want to build a nice house and I just wanted to, you know, have it, everything look nice.
I would say, Alex, in addition to the opposition that we've received from the neighborhood, just the fact that it is our policy not to create a dead end alley, and that's also in the staff report. In this case, although that north or portion of the alley is not passable in its current state, we're now essentially, uh, eliminating, eliminating any possibility of that continuing to the north. And as you saw, the petitioner did clean up the site and I believe the neighborhood is appreciative of that. And so is staff, as you can see from all the work that he's put into it, I think it is feasible that if you wanted to continue that further south, you could have a through alley as it exists today.
And do you understand, sir, the benefit of that as well or the possibility of that? For the neighborhood in general? I know not your property because you'd like to build a bigger home, but...
Right. And I, I think it access would be on the south end if somebody would like, you had mentioned, nobody has done anything in years and years. Um, so if, in case they would want to, they could still access it from that south end and the north end.
Then to staff's point, they're saying that, that's great and they would be able to do that, but then you're creating a dead end alley and there's no way to ever have a through, through area. Because I want you to be able to build a nice, great house, I really do.
Yep.
But it's like, I also don't want to be at the expense of everyone else down that street.
I guess...
And I mean, the way you have it looks great. And so it's like, gosh, maybe this is then the opportunity to allow everyone to build right there or at least have the street or look into that up and down. I don't know.
How big is your lot?
Fifty by a hundred.
So he can't build right on the alley because he's encroaching. How far off is the alley you have to stay to build?
Five foot.
High feet.
In the old days, we could do that, but not anymore. We'll drive up and around there. There's, you let it happen a hundred years ago, people built right on that alley.
Does that make sense how we have to weigh that a little bit or at least I know I'm trying?
I understand. I just hope that if I don't have the opportunity to purchase it, that, that somebody maintains it or, you know, that we can...
Yeah, that's fair. Can you go to the other end of the alley? So if you were, if you were to build, I'm just, that retaining wall that's there?
Yes.
So that, that would come down?
That would be where my house would be built. Right now, if we could get it, that's where I would build my house where that retaining wall is. That's why that retaining wall hasn't been replaced yet.
But you'd come over into the alleyway though, wouldn't you? Is that what you're...
Uh, it's going to be real close to that retaining wall.
You'd be right on the, because is that the alley?
The retaining wall over to the trees is a sixteen foot that I'm trying to purchase.
And you're saying, or let me understand you, is that you would build right about where that retaining wall is, the house will go there. You're not going to extend it, but you need the five foot?
Yeah.
Because you'd be encroaching on the alleyway.
Correct.
What are you going to do for a garage then? Nothing?
Uh, the garage will be on the front of the house where you drive in from the street.
Right there facing like you would drive in that?
I'm not a hundred percent on the house plan. It's going to be left or the right side. I believe they're probably on the left side of that.
Is that, is that correct, Jeff, that the retaining wall is in the alley then? Is that how that measured out or is it the fence on the other side?
I think if you look at an aerial, that wall is going to be pretty close to the property line. I don't believe there's been a survey. I know we have not done a survey to determine the location of that wall. Maybe the petitioner has, but, um, that wall appears to be pretty close to the established property line with the alley.
Well, that'd be right. Why wouldn't you build it that way? And you have sixteen feet.
And Jeff or Chris...
Sixteen, sixteen feet across to the other one, yeah.
Is there a way to, um...
That's probably about sixteen.
Allow him or allow him in the, in, I don't know?
No.
To be able to build right there? I mean, it's not, we have to have that five foot? You can't make an exception on this one or say that we, I don't know.
Adjacent to the right away for any future maintenance or for him to maintain a new wall structure. Typically, that retaining wall should be on private property and it should have a, you know, a couple of feet clearance so he can access both sides of that wall and be able to maintain it. So even if that wall's rebuilt, um, for him to be able to maintain on the alley side, he's still going to be in the right away while he's maintaining the wall.
There is a minor modification process, uh, that is a public hearing, but it's staff administered that could reduce the setback. I believe it's by two feet. So we get a little bit closer, but we can't reduce it to zero through our review.
You'd pick up three feet if I understand what you're saying to, to build on.
You could pick up two feet. We could reduce it by two feet. So it would still be at least a three foot setback.
Okay.
And does that help ease some of those concerns, Jeff, that you just brought up?
Yeah, I think that's, that's doable.
Would that help you?
To have eased two feet of it?
Because it's saying, it's saying if we leave that open, so the retaining wall, you'd have to go five feet in, right?
Interior.
We're saying that it's possible now you could get an additional two feet less so you don't have to have the whole five feet.
Sure.
You know what I mean? At least then you have two more feet that you didn't have before. If we just say no, we're not vacating.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, anything would help me and that would be, I would still would, I mean, I appreciate more, you know, the whole alley, but if the alley wasn't, the two foot would help. Yes.
Is that a staff action? Staff would do the minor?
We would send out notice to the surrounding property owners, usually within a hundred feet. And we would have a public hearing that they would be able to attend or send back notice, but it is staff administered and that would be appealable to the Board of Adjustment as well.
That makes a lot more sense to me. Okay, anyone else be heard? Thank you.
Jeremy Newbern, thirty two fifty Jones Street. I am, would that be west of his property and south of his property? And, and at my property line, that you, you guys are talking about dead end alley, it is a dead end alley. You can't get, deer barely walk through there because it's straight forty five degree angle. I mean, you could, even if you cleaned it up, you would never get a vehicle through there. And who's in charge of maintaining these alleys if it is a public right away? Is it the homeowners that live? Like you said, the five feet or whatever it was, ten feet on each side. If we maintain that, wouldn't that possibly be city's maintenance on that?
Typically, that's right, isn't it?
Yeah, I would think so. Typically for alleys, much like the parkway, it'd be the homeowner's responsibility. Oh, really?
Because, wait, the way he cleaned that up, that's, I've lived there twelve years. That's the cleanest I've seen that since I've lived there. But that's just why I was wondering. All in all, if we could gain a little bit more where we get privacy fences off of our property line, I'd be in favor for it too. You know, so, because I'm sure way it went back in the fifties, property lines are built on the property line, you know, walls and structures and stuff, but I'd be in favor for it too if I could put privacy fence up and eliminate the part that people don't take care of back there.
Do you want the vacation? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I approved it the first time back in fourteen. I argued it for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get his name and address?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Well, and if we want to go through with, uh, sending it back to get the extra feet, how would we?
You, you can recommend that, but it doesn't be part of this. I think the staff senses we would be supportive of that, but we don't have any say in that at the end of the day. The Board of Adjustment does.
So we don't need to make a recommendation?
The minor modification.
Amendment or...
I would avoid making any recommendations. If you would like, uh, the staff can work with the petitioner to have him fill out an application. I'd like to avoid any type of motion or condition only because the minor modification is a hearing and those notices are sent out to the neighborhood and the decision is based on that hearing and that feedback. It's not based on this vacation process.
It is to vacate.
To vacate.
No vote is to not vacate.
Call the roll, please.
Brecken.
No.
Moore.
No.
Scott.
No.
Waters.
No.
Capron.
No.
Twenty one's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen sidewalk program. I'll move that.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Twenty two is a resolution accepting a quote for workman's compensation coverage for the Iowa municipalities, miss, for the Iowa municipalities' Workmen's Compensation Association authorizing a notification of acceptance for October first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I'll move that.
Second.
That was for a year, so we're only buying a partial year?
Yes, um, they like to go on a fiscal year.
So our premium is how much for that timeframe?
For the, just for the October first to June thirtieth, that's eight hundred ninety thousand six hundred and twenty six dollars.
Well, that almost seems like it was the same thing if we would have kicked in August first or September first. Well, it's all based on payroll, but still, that doesn't make sense because your payroll should be less than there then.
Our payroll increased by four million dollars when we went back. What was originally submitted, I believe, is twenty eight million.
Donna Forker, Finance Director, we presented all of the salary information based on the eighteen wages, but we had all the cost of living rate, wages increase and step increases July first, and this was done after that. So they gave us a...
Wow. Well, we know who didn't.
Okay, that makes sense, but okay. Call the roll, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Twenty three is a resolution endorsing, endorsing revisions to Title thirteen sewers of the municipal code and the enforcement response plan and authorizing their submission to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. I'll move that.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mark Sims, Utilities Director. I just wanted to publicly make sure that, uh, we conveyed that, uh, this has been discussed many times with, uh, major industrial users and sister cities. Uh, if you do endorse this tonight, we will have a meeting tomorrow morning again with those major industrial users at the wastewater plant and, uh, they will again hear what we intend to take forth to Iowa DNR. Um, I will mention that Kim Hoskins is in the audience and Kim is, uh, the primary drafter of this. Uh, we've used the EPA model ordinance, which we think serves the city very well for us. Um, Kim and, and our legal staff has done tremendous work on this over the last year. So it's been a, a huge effort and I do want to thank them for that. We We do also have Jeremy Lay in the audience. He's our project manager for Bartlett West, for our design team. And Craig Samick is our pre-treatment coordinator. So if you have questions, make sure to answer those.
One more thing I'd like to add before I open up for questions. This doesn't bind the city. This is not the ordinance. What this does is it, it says you in principle agreed to redraft the ordinance. It will then go to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for their review and comment. Based on those comments, it may be altered. At that point, Mark will bring it back, and it will require ordinance changes, which will then be considered and voted on in public.
Yes, it does have a thirty day public notice period too. So there are plenty of opportunities for public to comment yet.
Will there be public hearings? Or will there just be that period for them to send in written comments?
Thirty day period. The public notice comment.
But following that, during the ordinance process, there'll be at least three readings of the ordinance, yes.
Yep.
Mark, your meeting next, you said next week?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
What are you going to say?
I'm sorry?
What will you say? What's your summary?
Essentially, that we have your endorsement to take this forward to Iowa DNR. DNR does not require that, but it gives a little additional support or backing that the city is moving forward. This does, by the way, give us the ability to establish local limits, and it does change things significantly in our pre-treatment program, and those are things that DNR has expressed, they have concerns about with the current program. And so we believe we've addressed all of those.
Okay, thanks.
Mark, we'll seeing, I know you've had meetings, but the information you provided, Council, is that basically the information?
Yes, sir. The only difference really is an emerging issue for us with some of the industrial contributions now is a constituent in the wastewater called TCAN, total caldol nitrogen. And we've not had a good opportunity to discuss that new thing with all of the industries, and we'll certainly be doing that tomorrow.
What time's the meeting tomorrow?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Yep, and you both are...
At the wastewater treatment plant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
I want to get out of here. Go ahead, Alex.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Citizen Concerns. Mr. Gradkin?
No, sir. Quite night, thank you.
Nothing? Don't want to talk about the wiffle ball game?
Well, we had a great time at the wiffle ball tournament last night, yesterday. Didn't we, Alex?
We did.
About the veterans event on Friday that you and...
Yeah, it was, you were there early. Bob and I were down for a couple hours after that, and it seemed to go really, really well. Got done a little early. They started, I don't know if you got my...
I did, thank you, because I was heading down.
Yeah, they suddenly started packing up everything about one o'clock, and, but I think they had a great turnout. It was shoulder to shoulder when I got there, so I think it was really nice, and for all the vendors to be there was important. I would say that next year, if City Council has a table and they do that again, I don't know if that's an annual event or not, we could, it'd be nice. I don't know if we have, do we have a banner of some kind that would say?
Looked a little tacky.
Yeah, it did. They just had a piece of computer paper that said City Council.
Oh, no.
And then maybe some informational.
Same piece of...
It said Board of Supervisors bias, so I made pizza blam.
Yeah. I got to play Keith for a day.
Oh, Lord.
But it was good. It went really, really well, I think. And...
Alex?
Um, I would just reiterate the thanks for the wiffle ball tournament. I thought it was great. It was really a good event for Sulan Cares, as well as the ribbon cutting of sorts that happened out at the Miracle League. That additional splash pad for younger kids. I'd like to thank Kevin Nigard, his whole crew, as well as the Casos family for that addition. I think that that's, things like that make our community really great, and I'm happy that they were able to do that.
To add to that, the Sulan Cares puts this on every year, the wiffle ball tournament, and this is their, their big fundraiser, so it went from, I believe, four teams last year to they had fourteen teams this year. So it's getting bigger every time, and and it's for a good cause, and it is a lot of fun, and we did have good weather, so.
Yeah.
Oh, and I gotta brag a little bit here. I did win the home run derby.
For one of the rounds, she did.
I did.
She's the only one that hit it.
Pete, why do you?
No, that's not true. I had competition, man. I'm telling you what.
The details.
I hit it out of the park.
Oh, I put it in the man and city manager's office. Our third place trophy. The mayor did not want.
I'll give you some trophies.
The only other thing that I would say is, on this Thursday, is a public meeting for the Pierce Street reconstruction. It's at the First United Methodist Church, nineteen fifteen Nebraska. So if you're interested at all in giving feedback or talking about that.
Conflicts, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, no, I don't think it conflicts with another meeting. Well, it does with another meeting, but I was planning on going to reconstruction too, but Brittany, are you going to be there?
I'm not there meeting this.
What's that?
Have you seen how torn up that whole area is? At nineteenth Nebraska? I don't know where people are going to park or how they're going to, any suggestions or where they?
Well, I got some hope with that.
You should be able to access the church parking lot.
Oh, okay, maybe you can from, you can, you can on nineteenth?
I thought you could get into the church.
No, you can't park on, which one is, goes in front of the old Green Gables? Nineteenth?
That'd be eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. You can't park on nineteenth because the contractor's got sewer pipe there.
Yeah, on both blocks. But if you, I think the church parking lot is on the north side of the church?
Yes.
So you might be able to come in from twentieth street.
It's on the north and the west.
They're tearing that parking lot up for the, I don't think there's parking.
Not on, not on the east side of the street, but on the north, on the west side of the street, north of the church is, isn't there parking there?
There's that dentist office there. Right?
No, I think it's gone.
There isn't much parking there, I can tell you that.
I just wondered because it looks like it's a construction nightmare, so.
I'll verify tomorrow and maybe we can get some parking signs, access signs.
When I was there last week, there was, Davis had a storm sewer, that's where they were staging a bunch of it, so, because it's all coming down that street.
Yeah, you might be able to get in the alley from the south.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, I'll verify and we'll see if we need to add some signs.
You start at four, don't you? Tomorrow?
That's the only meeting I have. Do you have another meeting?
Or Thursday, it's four o'clock meeting, I think, four o'clock.
Four to five thirty.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, the only other thing that I had was this weekend is Arts Splash. So I really, it's out at Riverside Park, starts on Saturday, goes most of the day, so I would, I would really encourage, maybe you're new here or haven't been, Arts Splash is a great time. A lot of green, local and regional artists come down and attend, so I would encourage, encourage you to check it out. So I am there.
You know, if you got a little time, you don't go down to Riverside and start hitting wiffle balls.
Mr. Moore, what do you have?
Thanks for bringing up Arts Splash. That's important. A week from today, there is no council meeting.
Labor Council picnic.
Labor Day picnic. Labor Day, yeah.
There's some other event that does conflict with the reconstruction deal, but it must be on my private calendar, right? Business wise, I can't.
Oh, I think I know what it is, but I can't.
Bob Padmore, wasn't there something else Thursday, like at six o'clock?
It seemed like there was, but I didn't sign up for it.
Anybody? Help?
Let me look.
Get mine off, but I'll get it on here. And then there was a really, really good kickoff of the USS Sioux City last week. And the mayor did fabulous at the whole reception of it, and it's just exciting what's happening with the USS Sioux City. And you'll see reports in the Sioux City Journal from time to time. You'll hear from us from time to time to please support it. The Chamber Office has moved to the Pioneer Bank Building, and they've got a really nice little shop with all of the clothing that you can buy, caps and shirts and sweatshirts, and they're on the first floor. You walk in the front door of the Pioneer Bank Building, you're right there to the left in Suite one hundred, so I would encourage people to go there and shop for Labor Day presents, I guess. That's all I have, Mayor.
When I was at the veterans thing, I came out and I'm going to butcher his name, Bill Tittinger, I think it is. He's a pork producer up in Plymouth County. We'd met him one time, Bob, here years ago. Remember when we announced the packing house and all the pork producers from Iowa came and had a meeting with you and I?
Yes.
There's a, they're doing another event like that on the Tapke Farm out by Correctionville. And I've got, I sent him an email. I haven't heard back, but anyway, he wanted to make sure that all of you understood you were invited to that tour the farm and have free pork chops and that. I'll get you the date, just so you know.
Here, will you send that to?
What's that?
Send that to Jessica and I. We'll get it on everybody's calendar.
Yep, yeah, as soon as I, I gotta get, I'll call him because he didn't return my email, but I just want, I think it's sometime in September, so you know when you get it, what it's all about.
And who did, who did he represent again then?
Plymouth County Pork Producers, but he, when he came here with us, Bob, he was on the Iowa.
Who was he?
He was like president of the Iowa Pork Producers at that time, I believe.
Oh, good deal.
That, those pork chops looked pretty good.
Yes, they did.
We didn't eat, but they looked good.
I think they were only, I asked him and they said they were just under two ninety-five. I was going to clarify that for you.
A restricted donor.
Okay, good.
What date is the commissioning of USS Sioux City?
The commissioning is November seventeen. And after the commissioning, there'll be a the mayor of Annapolis approved it. All the cadets, all four thousand plus will walk down the main street of Annapolis to the, to the football game. Then there'll be a tailgate for the Sioux City people at, go to the Tulsa Navy game.
Does the commissioning happens Saturday morning?
Yes.
And then it's an afternoon?
Right, but they'll start doing tours on Thursday, so people go out, and they are going to set in that Thursday, Friday, Saturday timeframe, different hours for Sioux City people only to take that tour.
That's going to be huge.
This is a once in a lifetime
Absolutely.
opportunity. I mean, it truly is.
It is, yep.
We can all be proud.
I move we adjourn.
Second.